Good morning, we're going to start now. It's the public hearing on the committee of the whole regarding bills number 140, 144, 140, 145, 140, 146, and resolution number 140, 159. Ms. Lewis, would you please read the titles of the bills and resolution?
Bill number 141, excuse me, bill number 140, 144, an ordinance to adopt the capital program for the six fiscal years 2015 through 2020 inclusive. Bill number 140, 145, an ordinance to adopt the fiscal 2015 capital budget. Bill number 140, 146, an ordinance adopting the operating budget for fiscal year 2015. And resolution number 140, 159, providing for the approval by the council of the city of Philadelphia of a revised five-year financial plan for the city of Philadelphia covering fiscal years 2015 through 2019 and incorporating proposed changes with respect to the fiscal year 2014, which is to be submitted by the mayor to the Pennsylvania Intergovernmental Cooperation Authority, the authority pursuant to the intergovernmental cooperation agreement authorized by an ordinance of this council approved by the mayor on January 3, 1992, for number 1563-A, by and between the city and the authority.
Thank you. Today, we continue public hearings of the committee of the whole to consider various bills read by Ms. Lewis that constitute proposed operating and capital spending measures for fiscal 2015, a capital program and a forward-looking capital plan for fiscal year 2015 through fiscal year 2020. This time, I would ask the administration, since you are already for it, I will not ask you to come for it, but I would ask you to start your presentation.
Thank you. Good morning, Council President Clark and members of city council. I'm Gary Jastrab, Executive Director of the City Planning Commission. With me today is Alan Urick, Deputy Executive Director, Eleanor Sharp, our Director of Intergovernmental and Legislative Affairs, and Mary Morton, our Administrative Services Director. Thanks for this opportunity to present the City Planning Commission's proposed operating budget for fiscal 2015. The commission's proposed operating budget of $3,164,107 is comprised of three parts: a general fund request for $2,272,534, a community development fund request for $280,000, and a grants revenue fund appropriations request for $611,573. This is a net decrease of $8,182 from the fiscal 2014 estimated obligations. For 2015, the City Planning Commission is anticipating a staffing level of 37 positions: 32 general fund positions, four community development fund positions, and one grants revenue fund position. This is the same level of staffing as the current fiscal year. Since 2008, the City Planning Commission has sought to institutionalize the comprehensive planning process in Philadelphia through three major initiatives: a new zoning code that modernized the city's land use regulations, promotes predictability in the development process, created a public civic design review procedure, and codifies the participation of community organizations in the development process; adoption of Philadelphia 2035, a citywide comprehensive plan that serves to align municipal, private, institutional, and civic resources towards common physical development goals. In addition to the framework of the Philadelphia 2035 citywide vision, six of 18 district plans have now been completed, another district plan is scheduled for adoption later this month, and work has begun on an eighth district plan. The third of these initiatives is creation of the Citizens Planning Institute as the City Planning Commission's education, training, and civic engagement arm. The CPI enables Philadelphians to take a proactive role in shaping the future of their neighborhoods through a more complete understanding of planning, zoning, and the development process. We have now graduated 210 citizen planners who have become active community organization members throughout the city. Our eighth semester of classes begins later this month. A major challenge for fiscal year 2015 and beyond will be to fully integrate the Philadelphia 2035 planning process and the grant-funded Citizens Planning Institute with new administrative duties established by recent amendments to the zoning code. This includes the creation and maintenance of a new registry of registered community organizations to provide public notice of zoning actions triggered by development projects. It's estimated that 1,500 such notifications will be issued annually. This notification requirement is being performed by existing PCPC staff. We are also ramping up the zoning remapping program to more effectively align the city's zoning maps with district plan land use recommendations, correcting zoning where it is outmoded or wrong, and proposing other zoning changes to advance the plan. In addition, the commission is participating in the development of a strategic plan to be developed by the land bank. Thank you again for the opportunity to present this this morning, and I'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Good morning.
Good morning.
So, a couple of questions. 2035, my understanding, and I've actually had a staff member attend a couple of 2035 meetings to discuss, I guess, leading up to, but in particularly, a goal for 2035. Can I ask you, what's the goal for 2015?
Well, the goal for 20, obviously, we're doing these plans looking forward to the growth and development of the city. For 2015, we want to continue the process of doing these district plans, which involves a great deal of civic outreach, a lot of data crunching by the staff, looking at existing land use, comparing that to existing zoning, and identifying where mismatches exist, looking at redevelopment opportunities, and ultimately proposing legislation, providing legislation to city council that would make corrections in our existing zoning maps. So, in addition to that comprehensive planning work, we have other chartered mandated responsibilities: coordinating and preparing a capital program, an annual capital program and budget for the city, commenting on all zoning legislation, and helping city council staff to draft zoning legislation, and making recommendations to the mayor and council regarding that legislation, making recommendations regarding the acquisition and disposition of city real estate. And then, there is an additional duty to review and comment on the school districts' capital program. So, all of these things are involved in our work for the current and next year.
Okay. That sounds like pretty much what you do every year and have been doing. So, what I'm asking you for is, what is the plan?
Maybe I can...
And I'll tell you why I'm asking that question, is that, and I actually asked a question last year, I think Mr. Greenberger was here, and we talked about a strategy for some of these neighborhoods that are declining and some of these neighborhoods that have reached the point of light. And I just have not been hearing a real plan for those type of neighborhoods, the formerly neighborhoods of choice. I mean, what's the goal? I mean, we talk about the fact that we're excited about the significant development around the perimeter of center city, including the west Philadelphia side of the river. But beyond that, there's not any measurable new housing starts and development initiatives. And when I asked last year about, well, what's the plan for that, the rest of the city, and basically, I do believe that, basically, they said that there was no plan. So, now, over the last several months, I hear you talking about 2035, 2035 all over the place. So, I ask understandably, what's the plan for 2015? What's the plan for 2016? You know, because in some of those neighborhoods, there is a sense of urgency, that something needs to be done way before 2035.
Certainly. I mean, in addition to doing these corrective zoning changes and changes to advance the plan, we're also engaged as a partner with the Philadelphia Housing Authority for their Choice Neighborhoods Planning Grant in the Sharswood neighborhood. We will be hopefully having the commission adopt a plan for lower north Philadelphia in the next month.
Is that, just, sorry for cutting you off.
It's okay.
When you talk about participating, and basically, the Housing Authority and working with OECD have kind of initiated that proposal.
We're a partner in that process.
So, I'm asking you, as the planning commission, because I think you should take the lead as a department on planning for these neighborhoods, and that's, I'm just not feeling that. I'm just not seeing that, all due respect.
Okay.
So, what, I mean, we, city council, right, we're politicians and legislators, and we deal with budgets as we are now. And, you know, we came up with a plan, right, for some neighborhoods around the city of Philadelphia, and we'll be having, rolling something out very shortly, an additional proposal. I think that's the type of information or strategy should be coming from the planning commission, not city council, frankly speaking, and I'm just not seeing that.
Yeah, I think we're, I mean, we're trying to establish the framework, the foundation, the infrastructure, so to speak, for private sector, institutional sector, and the coordination of other resources citywide to make improvements in these neighborhoods. As I mentioned, we're participating in developing a strategic plan for the operations of the land bank. A good part of that strategic plan will be based on the district plans that we're engaged in.
You will be, isn't that the responsibility of the land bank?
It is the responsibility of the land bank, but we are participating in that process with them to help define goals and objectives on an annual basis for the operation of the land bank. So, yes, it is their specific responsibility. We're a partner in that process.
Could I add something? Alan Urick, Deputy Planning Director. The process of Philadelphia 2035, just so everybody understands, we began a few years ago with an overarching kind of policy document for across the city. Then, we are looking in greater detail, district by district. Each of those district plans has two significant outputs. One is by working closely with the public, is envisioning what the future land use should be throughout the district, where the commercial corridor should exist, where different types of housing and so on. That process is an extremely important process to sort of get the public on board with all of this. And then, the next thing that has to happen from that is that we work with council and others in the community to develop the zoning changes that will, are needed in order to make those recommendations a reality. That process will, in theory, yield a much smoother development process, bring investment to neighborhoods where perhaps it hasn't happened before because the zoning was off kilter, and streamline that process tremendously. The other major output is recommendations on capital spending by the city, so that district by district, we are beginning to frame a much better idea where there are places that capital spending should be targeted. And that typically happens in areas that we're identifying, where there's a convergence of all sorts of issues that might be a preponderance of vacant land, lack of recreation facilities, all those kinds of things. So, those are the types of recommendations that I think are really important in order to get the public understanding this and then have actual, you know, output of new zoning and directed capital spending. Did you, Eleanor?
Eleanor Sharp, Director of Legislative Affairs, and I oversee a lot of district plan processes. And sometimes, there's a little bit of confusion in the nomenclature of Philadelphia 2035, because that's sort of a long-range vision of planning for the future, but we also look at...
Very long.
Twenty, yes. But we, but in reality, what we do is when we work within the district planning processes, we look at immediate solutions to issues that we see arise, we make recommendations for those, short-term, midterm, long-term. And once, apart from what Alan and Gary has already mentioned with regards to zoning, there's a multitude of recommendations that's come out of the district planning process, which involves a variety of agencies across the city. The planning commission also works very actively to work with all these agencies to effectuate and implement recommendations for the improvement of citizens' lives in the city. So, it's not just looking at 2035, it's looking at what can happen tomorrow, today, and fostering and facilitating the resources to effectuate those changes. So, that's what we really strive hard, and that's what a lot of the staff has been doing for the past two years. Typically, a process like this, we, what's the word, we hire consultants to do. The planning commission has actually absorbed this work, and so, staff has been very focused on making these happen. The problem is that it's cumulative, so we can't do the whole city at the same time. So, there's neighborhoods that we're focused on so far, the eight plans we have completed. We plan to do the entire city, and so, we typically do one or two plans at a time because that's what our capacity allows us to do. So, we're working on making it happen for the entire city. Outside of the district planning processes, when there are areas of immediate concerns for the city, the planning commission does not stay out of it and just locks ourselves into the district planning process. That's why we're involved with land bank, we're involved with a variety of other things that come before. So, we do address things in a timely fashion, not just the projection for 2035.
So, Philadelphia 2035 is not an end-state plan of what the city, you know, is going to be like in 2035. I mean, it's a continuing process, but we're...
Why did you pick 2035?
At the time we began the process, it was 25-year horizon, so we were looking at long-term, midterm, short-term recommendations. Our intention, as I mentioned, we're trying to institutionalize this comprehensive planning process in the city. Our intention is that when we complete the 18 district plans, we'll go back and review, start at the beginning again, and update all those plans in a continuing cycle, so that we don't, you know, we don't fall behind. For many, many years, citywide comprehensive planning wasn't really happening. We were focusing on special areas, the riverfronts or other special districts. We're trying to look now at the city...
Thank you.
Citywide.
I appreciate you doing that. I didn't mean thank you as in I'm finished answering questions. I just wanted to thank you for understanding that, I mean, understanding the significance of the waterfront and, you know, center city, but there are other people in other neighborhoods in the city of Philadelphia that deserve equal attention. And that's one last follow-up on this issue, and then, one question, and I'll turn it over to Councilman Heenan. What I found, because unfortunately, in some people's minds, I've been here for a long time, fortunately, from my perspective, I have, so I've seen a lot of plans come and go. And I think, more often than not, is that we do a plan, and there's really no likelihood that that plan's going to get implemented because either the resources aren't identified or a strategy identified that actually make it a real goal slash implementable plan. So, that's why I kind of ask these questions when we talk of 2035. I'll tell you what came back to me as a result of the meetings, the people that attended, and you guys went to Martin Luther King Rec Center, as an example, and packed room, right? And what I got from that meeting, they called me Darrell. These people are talking about 2035, we got abandoned property right across the street. What are you going to do about that? Right? And that's what people, basically, some cynics, because we have a lot of cynical people out there, say, "Well, they're talking about 2035 because they don't want to talk about 2015. That's why I referenced 2015." And you look at it, and you say, "Well, I don't really see anything in the short term that's going to be in a position where I can see it within my lifetime. I mean, just some people won't be here 2035." I'm just concerned that, you know, we continue, and it's not just you guys, I mean, preceded you all, and other administrations, we had these plans, we had these plans, and it's never an end game as it relates to seeing something tangible in these communities, which is why it causes people like us to come up with a proposal to do 1,500 houses. And by the way, it's now 2,000 units, right? And we would like you all to participate and collaborate on that particular proposal. So, it would be good if I could actually see the planning commission, and I think others feel this way, actually come up with real plans, to talk about real money and identifying potential real resources, and thinking outside of the box and say, "You know what? If we want to deal with mountain areas, as an example, West Oak Lane, where they're really nice neighborhoods, but you're starting to see some cracks around the edges, foreclosures were pretty high in some of those areas, what's the game plan for that? What's the plan for that?" And that's the kind of stuff that, you know, we'd like to see you all to process.
So, as part of our district planning process, in fact, we held one of these meetings yesterday. We do, on a periodic basis, we hold these meetings called exchange meetings, that, where other city departments are involved: the Office of OECD, Streets Department, Water Department, many other operational departments, so that we're all on the same page. And we review with them during the whole process of doing a district plan, the data that we've collected, the recommendations that we're making, so that we get buy-in from all of these various actors within city government, within the administration. Additionally, for each district plan, we create steering committees that are composed of neighborhood stakeholders: citizens, businesses, institutions. And as we conduct these plans, consult with them very carefully on existing conditions, what the recommendation should be. In addition to that, we do a lot of civic outreach. The meeting that you referenced at Martin Luther King Rec Center, that was a very hot day in a very small room. We held additional meetings for that plan, to make sure that people had the opportunity to be involved. And while Philadelphia 2035, people may be looking at that as an end-state plan, it's certainly not our intention to prepare these as end-state plans. It's a process with short-term, medium-term, long-term recommendations.
All right. I understand, but I'm just telling you what people think, right? People that won't necessarily have the opportunity to have a candid conversation with you, but when you go to these neighborhoods that have significant challenges, and you talk about 2035, it's like they don't, you know...
Understood.
They're just not realizing that this challenge is associated with that neighborhood. I'll come back, I have a couple more questions. I recognize Councilman Heenan.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm going to ask you several questions that you could provide the responses to the chair. You don't have to answer them now, but I'm doing this with every department and every agency in the city as they come in front of city council. Where are you located? Do we own the building, or do we lease the building?
Do you want me to answer them, or do you provide them to the chair?
No, I don't want the answers. I'm just giving you a chance to write it all down.
Okay.
How many employees and what departments are in the building? What is the square feet of employee space? What is the square feet of storage and materials in this space? And I said, how many departments in addition to what the utilities are that each department is paying for, the multiple utilities, and the cost of that. And also, when it comes to the planning and commerce, and all the multiple agencies that are now kind of combined, how does your procurement work? Do your purchases, are you purchasing department by department? Do you purchase monthly? Do you purchase yearly? Do you purchase in bulk? Or you're purchasing locally? So, with that being said, one of the things I noticed in the budget, and I'm kind of excited about, as being Chair of Public Property, and my former Chair of Public Property has in many conversations, one of the things that I'm excited about and want to look towards is how we utilize our space. How are you utilizing your space as a department and your spatial design? And I noticed that you have $7,000, is that correct? How much is allocated for the design space plan? Seven, right?
Our share.
Your share.
Our share.
Your share. So, I'm interested in the combined overall share, why you're doing it, and I'm excited about it, because I think we could, it goes to my earlier question, is make a, create a good environment for employees to work...
We could just make a little...
...to work together collaboratively in a more friendlier and accepted environment at 2014 standards. So, I'm excited about doing that and interested in the pilot, and I think we should be doing it across the city.
Could we add just a little commentary to your, answer to your question?
You sure can, and I guess you are.
Yeah, we'd love to.
So, yes, Councilman, we were involved in a couple of efforts. One was the Facilities Task Force that some council members were members of, and Tom Knox chaired last year. And there were some earlier recommendations that came out of a study that the administration did to look at efficiencies and space and other things. So, our floor in one Parkway building, which is city-owned space, is being looked at in terms of a way to change the layout that would reach a couple of goals. One is to allow our department and deputy mayor's office and the mayor's office of sustainability to work more efficiently and collaboratively, and also to free up space that would allow for consolidation potentially of other city agencies that perhaps are in leased space. So, we're in the midst of a space planning exercise that the Department of Public Property is managing on behalf of the city to really look at options for that. And as soon as we have some findings from that, we'd be, you know, happy to share them. But the total of the, I think it's $30,000, is, I believe, the fee for the space plan, and it's shared between the departments and some capital monies.
And I, you know, without any data to substantiate it, but I almost guarantee the rate of return on efficiency and, you know, the camaraderie and morale of our great city employees, because we have awesome employees that go to work and, you know, under extreme budget constraints and, you know, certain conditions, I think they do an incredible job all over. So, I think it's the right move, it's the right direction, and I am absolutely aware of the task force, because my office participated, thanks to the council president, who is, you know, public property is near and dear to his heart, too. So, I am absolutely going to be monitoring that and going to be in constant contact with the deputy mayor as this process goes along. I will come back for other questions in the next round.
Okay. Thank you, Councilmen. Here, recognized, Councilwoman Blackwell.
Thank you, Mr. President. I understand, in fact, I know that you're still working with some RCOs who have not completed every, all aspects of their application, so we're glad to hear about that. Let me say that I concur with the statements made by the president about 2035. People just think they'll be... People just think they'll be gentrified by 2035. And it's a real, it's a real problem. And we need, at least I know, I need again maps for the, well, once we get there, once all the RCOs are, once we get past that process. And as always, I say, we're glad that you go around to communities, but we really need you to go around communities after you meet with us. We have to be the ones to set it up. I tell you, many years ago, the late and great Lucian Blackwell used to say, "We should call it a special planning commission," because they planned for what they wanted, center city and South Philly and left other people out. We've come a long way, and you all do a lot more programs, which are good for our city. But we have our issues too. For example, I was dealing with RCOs, as everybody knows, not 2035. So I didn't do rezoning, didn't do rezoning and remapping. So two nights ago, thank God, we had a developer who had worked with the city in several places, at 32nd and Spring Garden, at 15th and Ridge. So he knew that to, to work with communities, and he was willing to come to us, because I've had three instances already where, where these contractors or developers go across the counter and get permits. So I have a big, big hole, because they got permits on a commercial corridor on Woodland Avenue, and they're ready to build. So the community is, of course, absolutely upset. It's across from USB. They accuse, they accuse everybody of being in collusion to leave them out. And we talked to the people even about safety, because it's just a big hole. And, but all of this, this idea of changing the law to make it easier for developers doesn't, didn't necessarily make it easier. It made it harder for the communities and us to know what's going on, because they're going straight across the, they're going to apply for permits and they're getting them. Now, I know that all of us have a responsibility then to do rezoning or remapping. But my one question is, I assume there's no deadline on that process when it happens? And number two, there should have been some process to allow time for these changes to happen, so that when these people are just going, getting these permits on commercial corridors and other places in our area, it makes it really difficult. We'll get there. It's our job to get there. We always do. But there, there's a lot that we changed. When we changed the zoning law, that did not make it easy for us or communities to be involved with what's going on. That's my point. So, and I assume then there's no deadline when we can do that, because we still have to change it and deal with all the CMX stuff and all of that.
Yeah, I know, I know the, I know the site that you're talking about. I'm not sure what the, what LNI review, LNI's review showed, if there was a zoning action of any kind, it would have required notification.
Wasn't required.
It wasn't required, it was a by, a by right project.
Now they can just get permits across the counter, part of new zoning code. These, you know, we said we wanted it easy for developers. We sure made it easier, but it's a lot more difficult for council people to be in front of it, so that we can call them with the communities in advance, so we don't have a problem. I was, I'm glad, as I said, because this developer had experience in, in various areas across the city, he was glad to come to a meeting. We called a meeting in a community center, he came and made commitments, said he'll work with the community and, you know, it's going to be fine. But, you know, you got to pray before you get there. It is going to be fine, because nobody knows. And obviously, if we represent about 150,000 people, we can't be in every place every day. So something could happen on one end that you don't know about. But it's because we changed the zoning code, we allowed this to all happen, to make it easier for developers. But again, it's just more difficult for us, because we don't have the upfront notice. Because when people apply for permits, we're not notified on that. They just get their permits and they go on. So they building buildings, building businesses, building major apartment buildings, and we don't have to know, because we voted for changing the bill that allows people to just get a permit and start building, because it's friendlier to them. We're all for development, but doggone it, it's got to be friendly to the people we, who elect us as well. That's my point. Unless the, the city's willing to, when they get a permit, let us know, then we, then it would be easier, because right now, it's just going to be tough until we all remap or rezone areas within our districts. And that takes a, that takes a while, because we all have many communities, and communities are self-determining. And we want to do what our communities want. So we have to go to them with all of these changes. That's going to take a while. So that's my point. We need to find a way to let us know in advance when people come and they want to do major developments, we need to know about it.
Thank you.
Mr. President, maybe we can look at something in that regard.
Absolutely.
Because it's tough until we do formal remapping and rezoning. You know, it would have been easier the old way, we know it, but this new way, we don't know what's going on.
Yeah, some sort of interim strategy, yeah.
All right, thank you.
Would you commit to working with the council on that?
Yes, absolutely. And working with LNI as well, you know, perhaps through, you know, monthly reports on permits issued in a particular district would, you know, would maybe solve some of that problem.
Yeah, some sort of early notification, so, at a minimum, even if it's as, as a right, these people know what's coming.
Right.
That, that is a challenge for a number of us.
Absolutely. My last question is only about inclusion, because the numbers, what did we have, like 13% or something like that? And 13, and the numbers are really down. It's in your report. And it was 26% in 2013, and, and 14, they're talking about a 13% participation rate. So we need you to deal with those numbers and let us know where you are in terms of moving those. And 13% is just too low.
We're certainly, we're certainly committed to doing our best efforts, and many of the contracts that, that the Commission is able to issue comes about because we receive grant funding to do a particular planning, planning study or planning, planning project. And as you can see from the, the data that had been submitted to council, the amount of contracts varies pretty dramatically year by year, based on our ability to secure, secure these grants. In the case of fiscal '14, we, we had, we had only one contract. We received a grant award from the federal EPA to do a brownfield study in the Frankfurt Creek area. And it was, it's a pretty technical study involving trying to find ways in which former industrial land, land that may be contaminated, could be put into more active reuse. So the, the, the skills of the firm that was selected are pretty, pretty rigorous and exclusive kind of skills. We, for this particular contract, well, for all of our contracts, but this contract in particular, we worked with OEO to establish guidelines for participation. And for, for this particular EPA study, OEO gave us a target of 10 to 15% based on the registration of firms in the city that were prepared to do this kind of work. So we hit that target, but we're certainly, certainly looking to, to increase that participation rate, and where we have the ability to do so, we, we will do so. You might note that in fiscal '12, in terms of our contracts, we, we had a 52% participation rate. And much earlier in fiscal '09, a 64% participation rate. So we're, we're very much committed to increasing that where we're able to.
Well, we're, we are requesting that you stay in touch with the President, so that we will know. We can't live in a city this diverse and have our numbers so low. That's just not acceptable. So we're asking that you maintain contact with the President and let him know where you are with those numbers, so he can let us know, so we at least feel that there is some, something in our city going on some parity with in terms of inclusiveness.
We will do that.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Tascow.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to go back to your comment that you made in terms of the current, of what's happening in the neighborhoods currently, and how do you plan for a neighborhood, my district? My district is predominantly residential, with business corridors. However, I had this conversation Saturday with one of my neighbors, who was very much concerned about, he mentioned the real estate, and what's happening in, in those homes, and what can we do to plan to help and coordinate with other departments? Help, because they'll say, "Well, you live in a high-income neighborhood, they, they don't meet, they can't get any of the, of community development, black grant dollars." And so what do we do? How do we plan to maintain those neighborhoods, viable neighborhoods, and don't let them deteriorate? And then we go in there with a lot of money, when you could do a lot of preventative, preventive work in helping neighbors maintain their properties. Also, give us, do a study on why the real estate, why people are moving, and why the houses aren't moving. And we need that kind of information, so we can plan as to what we, we might be able to do as we deal with our budget here in the city. So we can't forget those neighborhoods, can't wait until they get blighted, and then start trying to figure out how to, how to come back, bring them back. The focus should also be on, I think the planning for my district was way in the Northeast, where only a small portion of my district was involved in that planning. Most of it was for his district and, and the Brian's district. So we just got a little piece of the plan, and our folks really, but that neighborhood needs help. We need help up there. What is it do we need? People need to know that. People need to tell you what we need. And also figure out, you figure out, help us figure out, how we can maximize the services from the city to go in and help those neighbors. So that's what I need. I need information, I need data. So when we sit down and talk, it's not, "Well, well, I want a street light." It's like, "Oh, I don't, there's a house around the corner that's falling apart." We can get that at a community meeting. But if you're planning for the revitalization or the maintenance and viability of the neighborhoods, then we, the district council people, need information that's substantive, that we can make decisions on how we request services and dollars, or talk to our congressman about bringing dollars into the neighborhood, so, you know, we can maintain these neighborhoods, because I don't want it to look, be blighted in 10 years, where we don't have to go to blight.
Certainly, from, from time to time, we're able to do special studies, looking at, looking at housing. And we work closely with, with OECD and the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority to, to evaluate data and existing conditions in neighborhoods and make recommendations for them. We participate regularly in, well, in fact, staff. We have a staff member at all ZBA hearings. So we're, we're engaged in that, but I, I understand what you're saying and where you're coming from, and we're certainly willing to work with you to do, you know, any kind of special data analysis that, you know, that may be necessary, or that you would like to, you know, to see done. We're, we're willing to work with you to, to try to do that work.
So what, what is Plan 35?
2035.
Of 2035?
Yeah. It's a citywide, it's a citywide comprehensive plan. So it's a, it's, as I said before, it's a, it's a process. 2035 is, you know, at the time we began the planning process, 2035 was 25 years down the road. And that's, that's kind of a standard time horizon for planning agencies. It also-
I'll ask one question.
Okay.
What is it that you want to happen by 2035 with the city? What, what's the end goal? I mean, what are you, are you looking at, what will the city look like in 2035? Is that what you're looking at?
Well, in, in part, it's-
Do you have ideas about what 2035 is?
It's never, it's never an end state. I mean, the city is always becoming, it's always changing. What we're looking to do is to make sure that the infrastructure is in place, you know, whether that be transit systems, streets and highways, community facilities, zoning maps. We're looking to make sure that all of those, all of those elements of a, of a comprehensive plan are in place, so that as normal business occurs in the city, as normal development occurs in the city, that we have a good set of rules and a good foundation for how that development should, should occur. So it's, it's not an end state. It's, it's a, it's a continuing, continuing process of planning, evaluation, adjusting plans to fit changing conditions, and encouraging, encouraging good neighborhood maintenance, encouraging the provision of city services, encouraging development that, in neighborhoods that supports and encourages and advances those, those neighborhoods. So it, and multiple, multiple goals, you know, in a variety of areas, transportation, housing, economic development, commercial corridor revitalization, environmental sustainability. We're, we're trying to look at all of these, all of these elements and develop recommendations or guidelines for how we, how we make our neighborhoods better.
Can I add to that, please? Philadelphia 2035, first of all, to get, sort of clear up where that 25-year horizon came from. In part, it's because our Regional Planning Commission, the Delaware Valley Regional Planning Commission, that provides a lot of resources to the city and to us, keep, maintains a 25-year horizon for the, for the region. So Philadelphia, at the time, even though our charter mandate is to have an up-to-date comprehensive plan, we had not been keeping up to date with the regional plan. So we were, we took that 25-year horizon as our, as our end goal. But the three major focuses of this planning work is based on some existing strengths that Philadelphia has. One is that we have, and we want to promote a strong metropolitan center for the region. We want to be the place within the region where job growth happens, where people have access to jobs, where all that kind of economic development occurs. The second focus is on the fact that we have incredibly diverse, strong neighborhoods, some stronger than others, and that the idea is that all neighborhoods by 2035 should be considered complete, in that they have commercial services, they have institutions, they have a range of housing, they have minimized blight, all those kinds of things, so that neighborhoods throughout the city are all on a, on a par with one another, and that they're all, that they're all growing and they're all stronger. And the third has to do with the reuse of considerable amounts of industrial land that kind of ring the city from the water fronts to parts of North Philadelphia to South Philadelphia, places where there are great opportunities to look at how that, that land could potentially be used, either as job places, or public open space, or redevelopment for other type things. And I guess the, the most important aspect of it is that the plan envisions a growing Philadelphia in terms of population, and we've seen in recent years that that, that trend is happening, and that we envisioned 100,000 new people living in Philadelphia in 2035 that would be accommodated throughout these complete neighborhoods, have jobs in the economic center of the region, and that would be making better use of that, that derelict vacant land. So that's the vision for what 2035 is. And again, that was partly, we came up with that timeframe, because we wanted to be consistent with the regional plan, so we were able to, to have resources that come through DDRPC.
You have something to say?
And the Planning Commission is always ready and willing to meet with any special areas of concern, especially in your districts or anybody's districts outside of the district planning process. It's a simultaneous process, so we're always prepared as we move the district plans forward. If there are areas of concerns, that we will definitely figure out how to address them.
Well, we are going to follow through on that with the young lady who spoke with me, so that we will be having a meeting in that area with the elected official- so that we will be having a meeting in that area with the elected officials and this young lady and some other people who are involved. And we will invite you to come and participate so you get a sense of what we're talking about. Thank you.
Good morning. Councilwoman Bass?
Commander up. Madam Chair, kind of. Good morning.
Good morning.
I just have a couple of questions for you. And in listening to Councilwoman Tasco's comments and Councilwoman Blackwell before her, and even my own thoughts regarding the Planning Commission in Twenty Thirty Five, I do have to say, one of the things that I hear consistently is that it seems to be a disconnect between the work that the Planning Commission does and the work that we're doing in City Council. And as a district member, you know, I'm doing my own planning. I haven't picked up the Twenty, I have the Twenty Thirty Five in my office, but I'm not connected to it. I'm doing my own planning. I'm planning with the people who are in my community, who are in my district, the stakeholders, the, you know, the moms and pops stores, the business corridors, the special services districts. Those are the folks that I'm really doing my planning with. So, I do feel that there's a disconnect between Twenty Thirty Five and the work that you all are doing and the work that we are doing as district council members. And so, there needs to be a stronger connection. And so, whether you look at any of the issues here in Philadelphia where we have a particular need, where we have, you know, the growth in Philadelphia's Asian-American population or the disparities in healthcare among African-Americans, and how are all these things folded into your plan? And these are the kind of things that we're looking at in making the plans for our district. And so, I just really wanted to make a point that Twenty Thirty Five, you know, it's really only as good as its usefulness. And its usefulness really among the members, the district members in particular of council. If we're not using it, if we're not really embracing it and using it as a tool to empower our communities and better our neighborhoods, then, you know, it's just another plan. It's here today. It'll be gone tomorrow. And we, you know, we don't want to feel that way about it. But kind of right now, that's sort of the way it is, I believe. Like I said, I have Twenty Thirty Five upstairs in my office. I can't tell you the last time I cracked it open to figure out, oh, what should I be doing, you know, in Germantown or Knights Town or Tioga, you know? I'm not looking at Twenty Thirty Five. I'm talking to the folks who are on the ground right now in the present. And so, I just wanted to make a mention of that. And I don't know if you wanted to make any comments on that.
Well, I mean, we're certainly, we certainly want to improve those connections then and work with your office to help promote growth and development and sustainability in the neighborhoods with the people that you're working with. So, we're always open to discussions about that, you know, and certainly specific issues or specific development issues in your area. We are, we are aspiring to, as I mentioned, ramp up our zoning remapping program, looking to correct zoning where it may be, where conditions may have been, may have changed or the zoning may be wrong or other zoning changes to advance the plan. So, we'll be working closer with your office, I think, on those kinds of issues, those legislative issues. And we're also open to working with your office regarding capital facilities and the provision of those kind of services to neighborhood residents. Part of, one of the, one of the objectives of the comprehensive plan is to make sure that all neighborhoods are well-served by police, fire, parks and recreation, libraries, you know, and other, other transportation infrastructure. So, we're, you know, we're happy to work with you on that. Eleanor, do you want to add something to that?
I just want to iterate that the Planning Commission has a depth of staff and knowledge to assist in any planning effort that any council offices participates in. And we do have relationships with a council office. I think we're working on a remapping for Tioga with your office. So, in any way, shape, or form that we can bring our resources to bear in any of your work, we are always ready, willing, and able.
Well, I appreciate that. And I do want to, actually, I should acknowledge Matt Weisong from your office, who does a very good job and who does a lot of work in our district. But again, in terms of the work that's in Twenty Thirty Five and the work that we're doing in the neighborhoods on a regular basis, planning, developing, organizing, there's not the connection that I believe that there should be. So, whether it's my district, I hear, you know, Councilwoman Blackwell, I think articulating the same thing in Councilwoman Tasco as well. So, I don't think it's just me. So, just wanted to mention that. And also, going back to what you said, Gary, about all neighborhoods being well-served by police and fire. Can you talk about what your office has done in the planning to make sure that, you know, that those sort of services are provided? Because I have to tell you, I've been out to, you know, I go out a lot in my district. I've been to every school. I've been to most of the police and fire stations. And I can tell you that, and particularly the fire stations are deplorable. And there's a direct result, I believe, or a direct connection between, you know, the services people receive and the fact that if you've got a paramedic who's been out on a call over and over and over again. I mean, I remember visiting one station and the unit came in, left, came in and left again while I was there, you know, on the span of an hour, hour and a half or so. And so, they really get a break, really get a lunch, really get, you know, any sort of moment of downtime. And that does affect the quality of care. So, I don't know how you all feel that you fit into that equation, but I just wanted to, since you mentioned that you were engaged in that.
Yeah, we're, I mean, our primary concern as we do our district plans and take a closer look at the city's capital facilities. I mean, we're, we're really focusing on the physical nature of those facilities, not so much the way they operate. That's a responsibility of individual departments. But we want to make sure that, you know, there's, there's a park within walking distance of every neighborhood or there's, you know, there's adequate police and fire facilities for those departments to offer their services to the neighborhoods. So, we're doing that as part of every district plan. And of course, each year, we work closely with the Budget Office, the Department of Public Property Capital Program Division, and the various operating departments to come up with a, with an annual plan, an annual budget and a six-year plan to spend the city's limited capital resources in a way that makes the most sense. And certainly, the work that we've done or that we've done with the comprehensive plan and these individual district plans takes a much closer look at each individual district and uses, uses information and recommendations from those plans to inform the capital, the capital programming process. So, I'm not sure if that, if that answers your question. But we're, we're looking at physical facilities, making sure those facilities are, are in good condition and adequate for departments to, you know, to provide services out of those facilities.
Have you looked at all the facilities in my district? Or is that the way it works?
I don't think we've gotten to, to, I mean, we're, we've, we're only starting work now on our eighth district plan. So, you know, we're kind of limited in our resources as well. So, we're, we're taking these districts one, one at a time. And I'm not sure, I'm not sure of the exact schedule for getting to your, you know, a fuller encompassing of your districts, but we will get there.
I'd be happy to take you and show you some things that I, you know, think are important for your planning and, you know, for the importance where you look about the services that we're able to provide from a particular facility. Because in some of these, like I said, in some of these buildings, there's no way you can get quality service because you don't have the proper, you know, equipment or you don't have the proper, just sort of, I don't know. You're not at the right starting point, I should say. You don't have the right foundation to really be able to get up and off the ground and to go out and service people in a way that's acceptable. It wouldn't be acceptable if you were in Montgomery County or really anywhere else. And so, we need to think about, you know, where we're at, what the foundation is that we're providing and then asking people to go out, you know, and handle all these different cases for eight, 10, 12 hours straight. So, just, you know, something to keep in mind. One of the questions that I did have, reference to the R C Os, was the length of time that it requires now to become an R C O. And I know that the process has changed, but I wanted to see if there is any, is there a deadline? So, if I apply to become an R C O?
Yeah, we, I mean, based on amendments to the zoning code, we were in the process of creating a new R C O registry. We asked all R C Os to reapply during the month of February because the legislation was effective March 1st. So, we changed our regulations. We took new applications during the month of February. I believe there were two, over 220 applications received. We've now approved 175 of those. We're, we're working very closely. We're continuing to evaluate those that have not yet been registered. And if there's something lacking in their application, trying to work very closely with those organizations to enable them to be fully recognized as an R C O.
Do you have a deadline in terms of when you'll have, you know, this process completed for all of the applications?
I'm...
It's difficult because a lot of times it's an iterative process with the R C O because it's sometimes a lack of information and them getting it back to us in a timely manner. So, as soon as we have all the requirements, we tend to just approve them. So, we don't, we don't hold them or process them. Initially in February, because we were trying to get folks up to speed by the March 1st commencement, was that we tried to turn them around within two weeks. So, we were, we are able to accomplish that. So, any R C O that applied between February 1st and February 28th has been processed and approved. The only ones we have pending are the ones we're lacking information or they applied after March 1st. So, we're hopeful. And also, once we've finished this processing, the application process again opens up from June 1st to June 30th, and we'll have an annual application process.
Of this year?
Of this year. And then we'll do it again June next year. So, going forward, it will be June. But because the legislation began in March, we had a February special application period. So...
So, anyone who's not in now, we should tell all of our groups to hurry up for June, get ready for June.
Get ready for June 1st, and we should be, we should be able to process them again. And we try and turn them around quickly. We try and work with the R C Os. If you have pieces of information missing, come in, talk to us. So, we're trying to be very helpful in the process and especially through our Citizens in Planning Institute because we know the capacity of R C Os varies. So, we're also exploring having probably a technical workshop for R C Os sometime prior or within the month of June to assist the next batch who are interested in applying.
Okay. Thank you very much. Thank you, Madam Chair.
To Councilwoman Bass's questions. Your statement was, "We're always open to issues that may be of concern to district council members." So, share with us the protocols you use to engage council members and/or R C Os in their district when crafting long-term strategic programs. At what juncture does the community have a say?
So, the staff of the Planning Commission is structured that district planners have designated areas. So, I think of the 18 districts, one district planner could be covering one or two areas. And the goal is that they establish relationship with the civic organizations within each area with their council office staff. And so, there's also, there's always a relationship that exists that information, it's not formal, but information flows freely based on these relationships. For instance, like Councilwoman Bass mentioned, Matt Weisong is very active in her neighborhood and is on top of whatever issues come to the fore. He's been working on Maplewood Mall. So, it's not a formal process, but we try to build them around relationships between staff and council office. We also, in the district plan process, ensure that council is part of the steering committee.
Okay.
Yeah. We also don't try and go into the neighborhoods without first giving a heads-up to council that as part of the district plan process, we want to have public meetings, who should we contact? Can you invite these people? So, it's sort of a working relationship that we try to foster and make sure that we're not acting outside of the purview of city council.
Very well. As an at-large person, I get a chance to travel across the city and get a chance to, in a very, I don't consider myself at all an expert, but look to see the sometimes inequities that exist across certain buildings, rec centers. And so, does the planning, your department ever consider having a report card, for lack of a better word, or an annual assessment or evaluation where you grade buildings so that when district council members are thinking about upgrading or improving, they have some means or standards by which to measure by?
The task force that I referenced before, the facilities task force that was chaired by Tom Knox, that the Planning Commission had a staff role in working with. One of the major things that came out of that effort is the need for a, across-the-city database of the condition, the occupancy, the spending on city assets. Right now, they are, as you are familiar, there's information that's in a number of different places. And we are in the process of consolidating that so that we will have a good foundation of information in order then to build something like you're referring to, which I think is an excellent idea, to be able to have almost a dashboard of characteristics for facilities so that can come into play as the capital program is developed.
Terrific. So, what's the timeline for that?
The database currently exists in terms of basic data. We are working with O I T to explore options for expanding it so that it's more able to be a more robust system. And I would say over the next three or four months is the timeframe to try to work with O I T to get that started.
And the next subsequent steps after that, after you have that data or information, is what?
Is to set up a system so that all departments across the city are using one centralized database and ensure that the information is updated regularly. There's a whole series of decisions we have to make in terms of where the management of that data will be, those kinds of things, which is what we hope to flesh out over the next several months. But ideally, it'll be a warehouse of data that all departments feed into so that there's a consistent one place that everybody is maintaining that information from public property through to all the departments.
Okay. And I might suggest that at some juncture, it would be important for district council members to know how to access that. So, knowing what one district has, another district council member may be so inspired because they've seen what another councilmatic district has, all in the goal to have equity in terms of appearance and cleanliness and all those other factors that make for good, and I'm just using recreation facilities as an example, make them, to the extent possible, knowing that they have different years attached to them. Some are older than others. But that aside, some level of uniformity, where there's some basic fundamental criteria that all rec centers meet, period. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Chair recognizes Councilman Heaney.
Thank you, Council President. So, in your testimony, you reported that in 2013, there were 12 projects that had C D R meetings, and there's been an uptick in the first quarter, the '23. Do you anticipate a continued trend as we've been seeing this year?
Yes, yes, we do. We, I mean, the meetings with R C Os, you know, will, will occur regularly. And as development projects occur, we're, you know, we're certainly monitoring, maybe not participating, but monitoring the activities of the R C Os to make sure that they're performing, you know, as they, as they should be and requiring developers to, you know, to meet with R C Os as the zoning code requires.
So... You were asking about C D R. C D R. So, the C D R process, as you are familiar, is a review of projects that meet certain thresholds in terms of their, their impact on the surrounding community. And it's a review of how those projects impact the public domain, the public realm from a design perspective. I think, as Gary pointed out, as time, we're seeing, you know, an increase in market activity...
I think, as Gary pointed out, as we're seeing, you know, an increase in market activity, therefore, there are projects coming across the desk at LNI and through other means that are triggering those thresholds. And it is very likely that we will continue to see more and more of those that need to have a civic design review process.
It's encouraging that there's an uptick in economic development, which leads me to ask, so in the CDR process, before we even get to the RCOs, have the commission reached out to the district council persons who has a seat on the CDR committee as well as the RCO positions that they have on the CDR position?
Yes. So part of the notification process for all cases is to notify the council person, notify all the relevant RCOs that are impacted by the project, and the applicant, of course.
So it's predictable, so there's an outline that you, and guidelines that you have that you must follow, right?
Yeah, because we had a CDR yesterday, and council was represented along with the two RCOs, so...
Out of the, and I'm only going to speak of this year, 2014, has everybody participated in that process?
Meaning council?
Meeting, where they're, so the allowed position in the CDR?
Not always.
Were there vacancies, or did people participate in the process?
They have been vacancies. I think it depends on the project. If it's not a controversial project, let's call it that, sometimes there's been, I think there's one example when no RCOs showed up, but they did send a letter or something.
So do you have this, or do you have the data that you could provide to the chair on, not necess, you could do it by district, that's not my concern, but more of, like, what spot isn't being filled, and are you notifying the RCO? Or who designates the RCO for that CDR? So I want to make sure that the communities are being involved in the process, which they are by law and by code.
They are. Everybody is notified, but not everybody always shows up for the CDR meeting. But we can get you that information.
If there are multiple RCOs for, you know, in the air, that serve an area where there's a particular project, we will consult with the council office, the district council office, to select a coordinating RCO. And as you know, the timeframe for making those decisions is fairly short. So we, you know, we are certainly notified.
I mean, I just, I'm just looking to see if you could just provide to the chair, you know, whether, you know, the spots added, the '23 so far in the first quarter, roughly, I mean, if that's correct, unless I'm reading it wrong. And it's trending, you know, to increase as we move forward. I just want to see if there's a pattern of what spot hasn't been filled and what spot is being filled, as far as the entire committee, you know, that includes, you know...
It's an exception to the rule that it's not filled, but we'll get you that information.
That's fine. Sticking with, how has the compliance been with RCOs? How is that process moving on as far as calls, you know, subject to the new change and informing them of the changes? And what kind of response have you gotten back?
We've gotten 200...
And have you been assisting them?
Yes, we have definitely been assisting them. We opened up applications because the new legislation went into effect March 1st. And so we opened applications for all RCOs existing and new ones to apply between February 1st and February 28th. We received, I believe, maybe 170 applications by then. We have subsequently still received additional applications, making a total of 220. We have processed all applications received between February 1st, February 28th. I do believe we only have 17 left to process, and anybody that's pending, it's because we're waiting on additional information.
So you're assisting them with the compliance?
Oh, yes, completely. We're trying not to deny. So we're working with them, we're waiting to get materials back, we're waiting to get information. And we're opening up a registration window again for June 1st to June 30th. And then that will be our annual registration period. So we're doing it twice this year.
A little practice run here, right, for the big one?
Yeah. Well, it will be, hopefully, not the big one. This was the big one.
No, the initial was the big one?
Yeah. Initial one was the big one. So far, it's smooth. Most people have submitted it. We have 175 registered and online, and we're going to work to get the others that are pending.
As we go through this process, could you provide to the chair, you know, the, you know, so the total number of RCOs, how many have reapplied, and how many you helped through to process to come into compliance? And what's that saying? So I'm just trying to get some measurements and benchmarks to make sure that the system that we're trying to make a little more predictable and easier for, you know, from a burden perspective, you know, when our communities are being reached. Just want to make sure that we're accomplishing what we're set out to do.
Yeah, I think, I mean, just as a general comment, I think with the new registration process, because RCOs had been through the first process, which was the first time for everybody, generally speaking, RCOs have really developed a better capacity to, when they reapplied. You know, they knew what information was required. I think they did a better job in preparing those materials for our review. So I think there was a lot of learning that happened.
Okay, okay.
And in terms of technical support, we actually held in February three workshops for RCOs to come in to assist them in the application process. So we were trying to support the system as best as we can.
As long as you're assisting the RCOs to, you know, either come into compliance or to become a new RCO.
Correct.
At the same time, coordinating with the district council person.
Correct.
And letting them know what's taking place in your district. I think that is, I think that's, I wouldn't want to know as a district council person, so I'm sure we all do. All right. Council President, is there anybody else in the queue? Or I'll wait. Okay, I'll come back. Thank you.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Blackwell.
Thank you, Mrs. Director. How long after a group is told that they are approved, after this new application and any changes or amendments, I should say, you want to their application? After they're told they're approved, how long does it take for them to be posted? Because I'm having that as an issue as well.
I believe, I don't want to speak out of turn, but I think we upload twice a week. So they might be approved on a Monday. I think there's a Wednesday upload to the system, the city's website, so they can be registered online. And then I think on Saturday night. So it's twice a week. So as soon as they're told, they fall into the queue for the next level of upload. So it should not be more than a week, once they've been approved.
Well, that, I do have that as an issue, where the group says they were told they're approved and they haven't been on, they weren't listed on the website. All right.
We can follow those.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Swilla.
Thank you, Mr. President. On the RCO issue, there obviously was a lot of confusion since the new introduction and the March, I guess, reapplication, and when they're approved. And I noticed there was some communication back and forth from where RCOs either was incomplete or they need a little more information. But what happens if there's an RCO? Now, they have to reapply every year, correct?
Every two years.
Every two years. If an RCO falls out of compliance at any time before that, is there an issue where if another RCO challenges that, or something happens where, or they stay that RCO even though they're not in compliance? That was a question brought to me, so I didn't know the answer.
We do have regulations that state that if the RCO is not holding meetings on a regular basis, not having them open to the public, and we become aware of that, there is a process for decertifying them. We've never had to do that to date. And of course, if an RCO is, should ever be decertified, they would have an opportunity to reapply. So, you know, we're trying to monitor them as closely as we're able to. If it comes to our attention that an RCO is not performing as they should be as a representative of community residents, we would then investigate it. We haven't had to do that to date.
Right. Well, I know it's fairly new. Hopefully, you wouldn't have to do it already.
Yeah, I'm hoping.
I mean, they just reapply to March, correct?
Correct, February.
So the approval process just happened. I mean, I don't expect anybody just approved to be, it's kind of hard to say that they aren't going to compliance at this point. But that was a question, just from a good RCO, somebody who actually does it, and they were just wondering if somebody could challenge their RCO status and then...
We do have about a year of experience with RCOs under the original zoning code. And, you know, we've never had to take action to decertify anybody.
Okay. But that, now, is that action brought, can be brought by any individual? That's what they're concerned with. Who would challenge that?
I think in our regs, it says, like, if they're not performing their duties. So you couldn't just challenge me on the face of nothing. It has to be like, I didn't, as a coordinator and RCO, I failed to hold a meeting or failed to submit the meeting minutes in a timely fashion. So it has to be something that falls within the purview of the responsibility of an RCO.
All right, so if somebody had to complain about them, you could just ask for their meeting dates and their minutes for those meetings, and therefore, you could, it would just be thrown out and just saying that?
It would have to be something justifiable.
Right. Now, I guess during the zoning process, the people applying for the zoning get notice of who the RCOs currently are, correct?
Correct.
And they have to contact them, and then they also have to fly the area for the meeting.
Near neighbors.
Right? And that is, during that process, if there's an RCO that was not included in that for some reason or became new, they can only apply certain times, correct? Can they apply at any time?
RCOs? RCOs, the application window actually closes February 1st to February 28th. Applications will open again June 1st to June 30th. We have some lag because of the processing, so we're going to try and finish those out probably by the end of this month. But a new RCO, we could talk offline, but if it was, if the application...
Just for general questions.
You can't, it's an annual application form.
Once a year?
You can't just pop up and be an RCO in the middle of the year, no.
Okay, so, and the developers or the person who's doing some zoning issue or having permit and building a deck or something would then be notified of who that, those RCOs are?
Correct. The process is that the Planning Commissions get notice from LNI that of the refusal. We then turn around, generate addresses of near neighbors based on the regulations. We notify city council. We notify, we send a letter to the applicant, copying city council, all the RCOs, if there's more than one. If there's no RCO, we contact council and ask you to be the designated RCO. And then we also ask you to determine who the coordinating RCO is.
All right, so you send a letter to me?
We copy.
All right, a physical letter or email or?
Email. There are some RCOs which request snail mail, so we do mail as well.
Who gets that mail? Who gets that email?
In your office.
Does it go to who? To my chief of staff, or does it go to?
I think, I forget who the designee in your office is. I think it's copied to Sean, but I'm not sure who the point, I think he pointed somebody else as the point person.
Okay, so they would get, they get an email for every zoning in my district?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And at that point then, so they're notified when the applicant is refused and is now going to?
Within seven days, the Planning Commission has to send a correspondence indicating the addresses of the near neighbors that the applicant is responsible to notify about the project, all the RCOs, including the designated coordinating RCO, whether it's council or somebody else, and who they, instructions to...